Good evening, I'd like to call the regular Ansonia Board of Aldermen full board meeting for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and justice.
Trish, can we get a roll call?
Alderman King. Alderman Stowe. Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Nutt.
Here.
Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon.
Here.
Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. Nine present.
I declare quorum. Uh, before we um move into the rest of the agenda, I would like to um get a motion to add late communication number one to the agenda that you received today.
Motion to accept, second.
Motion to accept by Mamon.
Oh, my second day, you can grab Joe's first.
Oh, motion to accept by who's who who made the motion?
Yaman.
Yaman.
Yaman, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, through you, can I can I also make a motion to amend the agenda to add um and something under ordinance to um? I wanted to amend the uh the fire abatement ordinance. So if we could discuss that.
Okay, so motion to add ordinance uh by Alderman Yaman, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Okay, um, we have three sets of minutes to approve um. The May ninth regular board full board meeting, the May thirtieth public hearing on the budget and the June first special uh full board meeting.
Motion on all of them.
Motion Rivers. Do we have a second? Second by Janetti, all in favor of accepting those minutes and placing them on file?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I will abstain, I believe I was absent from the public hearing on the thirtieth, this is Yaman.
Okay, one abstention, Yaman. Motion carries. Uh, let's see, next up will be public session, just a quick reminder, um. Anyone from the public is welcome to speak, please identify yourself, name and uh address for the public record, please limit yourself to three minutes or preferably less. And um. I think that's about it, anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? The Board of Aldermen. Please raise your hand or make yourself known somehow. Second call, anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Third and final call, anyone from the public?
Hi, Thomas Higgin, fifty-two State Street.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, just looking at these. Executive sessions act, actions. Um. Regarding the sales of. And so the copper brass and SHW buildings, um reviewing some of the court filings that you all have, uh just be cognizant that the. I think fourteen million dollars to take down both of those buildings. Um, doesn't include the cost of remediating the dirt, and my guess you're gonna have to at least go down three, four feet, so. Let's take that to consideration when you're negotiating how to sell or lease those properties.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Last call, anyone from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to a public official session, Mayor Cassetti.
Good evening, President Schur, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. First, I want to congratulate the graduates of Ansonia Middle School, Assumption School, Ansonia High School, my son Dave just graduated, and graduates of the Emmett O'Brien Technical School. You are all to be congratulated for achieving this milestone. And it is an honor to be part of the ceremonies for the past ten years. June, July, and August are going to be action-packed months here in Ansonia. Get your pen and paper ready for the following events, we have some exciting news. On June seventeenth, Saturday, we are proud to celebrate Juneteenth in Veterans Park from noon to one P M. On June twenty-fourth, Saturday, at eleven A M, the long-awaited grand opening of the Splash Pad. Bring your swimsuits and be prepared to make a splash. Chicago and Joe, are you ready? And by ready, I mean are you prepared to go out in public in your swim trunks? From Wednesday, from Wednesday, July fifth through Sunday, July ninth, the Ansonia Carnival will be happening at Nolan Field. Our Senior Center grand opening will be July sixth, Thursday from noon to three P M. Please join us to see the start state-of-the-art Senior Center and enjoy the delicious luncheon. There's a lot happening, we will have two grand openings coming up in the next two weeks. A brand-new bakery, munch-eatery, and the new and expanded Palmas Restaurant. Stay tuned for those announcements. Next week, look for more demolition of the remaining buildings at thirty-five North Main Street. Finally, last but not least, I want to wish all the fathers out there a happy Father's Day this Sunday, June eighteenth. I know I will be taking my family out to dinner, and as a special treat, I will also be paying the bill. That's it for now, thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, next up, we'll hear from Corporation Counsel John Marini.
Mr. President, members of the board, good afternoon, evening. Uh, give you some quick updates on projects and initiatives we're working on. Number one, the police contract, um I've given some updates in months past about the progress of the negotiation, and I'm really happy to report tonight that we have an agreement in spirit with um our police union. Um, I'd like to give a big congratulations to Union President Vinnie Orlando and his negotiation team. And of course, our own negotiation team, um including our uh chief and Lieutenant Lynch. Um, thank you guys very much for being part, everyone a part of the process, we believe that we've achieved something that um carries with it some big wins for both the membership of the union and for management. We're in the process of memorializing everything that we have agreed upon to writing, and you could look forward to a draft of the proposed agreement for your consideration and hopeful ratification in the next couple of weeks. Our hope is to give that to you ahead of our next Board of Aldermen meeting, so we can have a very substantive discussion on it um at our next full meeting. But big thanks to everyone involved in that, it was a long time coming, but we believe the result was far, uh far, far worth it. Um, number two, I want to let you know that Abe Stone Park, our project uh to basically uh raise a resurface Colony Park is going forward in July, um there's been a lot of questions, a lot of waiting on that project, of course, that was caused by some uh insufficient drainage, um that was due to the elevation, the overall elevation of the field that caused it to flood out constantly. The improvements that will eliminate that issue going forward should be made by the end of the summer, allowing seeding to take place in the fall and allowing Abe Stone to be reopened for use by sports and and for overall recreation by the spring, so that project is on track and you'll be getting updates. Um, I want to update you on the Opera House as well, um as you know, we have a group of volunteers that have been hard at work on promoting the Opera House, getting it some great visibility, in fact, you may uh see that there was recently a production filmed at the Ansonia Opera House, big thanks to that production crew, and of course, to Anthony Mullin, uh his team, including Tommy Drivers, that helped bring this production crew in here to give a spotlight to our Opera House. Um, you may have also heard there's been a slogan contest put on by the Opera House group, that's gonna be um, that's already been announced, but you'll see more on that later. And this all leads up to our feasibility study, we're expecting the results to our application for funding for a feasibility study on the Opera House very shortly, and that will trigger our next main phase of the project, which is of course, the exterior renovations that everyone is excited to get to. So thanks to our Opera House team and this board for their support, very excited. Um, want to update you on the Maple Street Plaza, um in case you hear uh or may have heard already, but we've had some issues on the Maple Street Plaza that abuts Olson Drive in terms of blight conditions and safety issues and hazards within the storefronts, that that property is actively under blight, and the city is taking a very um a very strong approach towards enforcement at this point because of the caliber, the the level of the safety hazards involved. Uh, we've spoken with tenants, we've spoken with the owners, and we're hoping we're, the city is going to achieve cooperation to mitigate these uh problems before it goes any further. More than happy to answer any questions on that, um you know on your agenda that we have some properties uh to discuss tonight, this is a continuation. Um, the board has already put in motion um the um the process under the charter and under the code for selling or leasing properties. I'm happy to report that these properties have already gone to our um conservation and recreation commissions for their input. I mean, they have indicated that these properties do not have uh recreation, open space, or conservation um uh interest uh the value to the city. Um, therefore, the next stop will be to planning and zoning for those properties that have not already been for an eight-twenty-four referral. And that is of course, under Connecticut General Statutes eight dash twenty-four, um planning and zoning gets the opportunity to review a potential sale or lease of properties and indicate generally whether they're for or against that as it suits the plan of conservation, our zoning plans, uh and and the overall interest of the city. So we're gonna talk more about that tonight in executive session, but you could look forward to those items reaching planning and zoning likely later this month. Um, and in addition to that, you also have a co- contract for consideration tonight for our um recently hired superintendent, Tim Holman of Public Works. Um, and other than that, I would leave it to questions of the group.
Any questions uh from the Aldermen for Attorney Marini?
I had one that may bleed over into, you know, something with Sheila and Colony Park, we we toyed with the idea of maybe getting the U I out there to uh either give us an estimate or something on to to install some lighting or something like that, if we're making some of these renovations and potentially securing some sort of recreation grant money or something like that, do we still have that possibly on the table?
So one of the initiatives we've been undertaking, uh they're gonna hear more about in the coming month, is the potential for a capital improvement plan. Um, going to um going to referendum in connection with the municipal uh ballot this fall. Um, the idea of lighting, if grant funds are not available for that project, is it could be very much in play for the referendum. So to that end, we are going to be securing estimates from U I and other vendors. Um, also mentioned our cameras, so and much more is going to play into that, but I'd say it's gonna probably fall Alderman Mamon into that bucket if there's no specific grants available for recreation lighting, and as we've discussed before, sometimes it's a little difficult to get us grant funding for recreation purposes, so likely a lighting element would be a referendum item.
Excellent. Thanks, John, appreciate it.
No problem, I also want to mention, I I because I believe it is very important, um the Splash Pad, we're very excited about the Splash Pad grand opening. Um, Orange Transonia is going to be with us on the twenty-fourth, um and just a big uh recognition to Dawn Ossie um and to that group, Orange Transonia, um during the our absence of a Splash Pad, that group has summer after summer um conducted in connection with our uh fire department, um some wonderful um splash days, um water days at at Nolan Field um in the parking lot that have been enjoyed by a large uh amount of our community, I think played a big part of of uh getting interest up for something like a Splash Pad, so we want to thank them for their past efforts, and of course, we're very happy that they're gonna be with us for the grand opening of that Splash Pad, and we hope to see everybody here there as well, because this Board of Aldermen made that possible.
Terrific, any other questions uh for Attorney Marini from the Aldermen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alderman Rivers, go ahead.
Okay. Do we have numbers on this um? Garbage thing yet? The bags or that whole program?
So Sheila and I believe Kurt met with representatives of that program several weeks ago, and they're going to give you a little update about where we stand right now with that program, I want to note that you may have received um some literature um in your mailboxes or on your doorstep regarding the program, now please know that the city of Ansonia did not send that literature out, nor was it authorized, we want to make very clear to our residents um that their involvement in this program has always been optional, and we've been a little dissatisfied with the um the tone that some of the literature put out um by the uh by the by the entity of pursuing this has been looking like it's mandatory, looking like it's city mandated, and that's just not the case. Uh, but Sheila and Kurt will give you a little bit of an update behind the scenes as to their conversation with the vendor.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, any other questions?
Josh, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um. The director, I've heard Mr. Holman be called the superintendent and the director, could we pick one title so that? Title is contract and paperwork, and that's who we're what we're gonna call him.
We tend to use those terms interchangeably because of course, there is not both the superintendent and director, they're one and the same, and so I think whatever we formalize in the contract would simply line up with what's referred to in the charter and the code, that way nobody thinks there are more than one position, because you're right, there's only one.
Thank you.
Good question, Bob. Any other questions for Attorney Marini tonight from the Aldermen? Okay, uh we'll move on then, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley, take it away.
Thank you, Josh. I know you're happy to hear from me, um. I wanted to mention two, two public hearings or workshops that we're holding in addition to all the stuff that the mayor had mentioned, um tomorrow night is is a um informational session on resilient Ansonia, and this was a grant that the the cog initiated. Um, and they took a look at uh our entire city and where our flood and heat risks are, and how do we adapt to that, or how do we enhance um our community and make it flood and heat resistant? Um, it's an interesting study for any of you who would like to uh join us tomorrow night from six to seven. Um, and we'll be talking about, you know, areas of improvement in the city and um and actually good information for me to use to leverage additional funds to make improvements, um for instance, on streetscapes or green space, et cetera, so that should be interesting, and will be tomorrow night from six to seven. I'm sorry, um, and then the the next public um informational session we're holding at the Armory on June twenty-second from four to six, and that's U I and Evan Guard, or they're gonna discuss ways to save money and how to manage your um energy bills, so for anyone interested in that, uh hopefully, you know, they'll have some good uh information for our residents. So I just wanted to mention those two items, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cough again. And then uh I'll mention another five hundred thousand dollar grant that we received uh in supplemental funding to continue along with demolition at thirty-five North Main Street and waiting on uh um waiting on another grant, a bigger one um for uh which will help us create a site pad, several site pads, and get a tenant in into thirty-five North Main. Um, I think, you know, for brevity's sake and for my cough, I will uh leave it at that for now, although there's a ton going on.
Any questions from the Aldermen uh for economic development tonight? All right, you got off the hook early.
Darn it.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll bring you back soon though, don't worry.
Thanks.
Next up, uh Chief Fiscal Officer Kurt Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh good evening, everyone. Uh, just a quick update for me, because finance is kinda in that lull, uh which is quite nice, the budget is completed. Uh, and we're just about to begin our work of ramping up the closeout of fiscal year twenty-three. Um, so that is really good, we're starting to do the basic preparations, we have a little timeline in place um of how we'll work with the auditor to get all of the information uh complete, which is really good, we're going to, as we normally do each year, we're gonna shut down the uh purchase order process on Wednesday, June uh twenty-first. That's been communicated out to all the department heads, so they are aware. Um, we hope to have the system back up and running for fiscal twenty-four by Friday, July fourteenth, uh could be faster. I just don't want to overpromise with the holiday and things, uh just to make sure we get that all set back up and running. Uh, the staff has been doing a a good job trying to clean up as many things uh as they possibly can, I apologize for the late communication. Uh, one of the things that we are doing is cleaning up the two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen referendums. Uh, we've gone back through and um you know, made calculations as to how much money is needed to be left for each of the individual projects, most of them have been officially closed out at this point. So we'll be sweeping all of that money uh into one account for future use up at Nolan Field, uh which is certainly something that is very good. Um, and then finally, uh John and I had a conversation with uh Bond Counsel uh last week, uh to start putting together a timeline for a referendum package to be voted on by the residents in the November election. Uh, John, Sheila, myself, and the mayor uh have been going through all of the capital requests that have been put in by the departments. Uh, I hope to have a draft of that ready um at some point in the coming weeks and have in front of this board uh for final vote and approval um to push forward to uh the referendum in November and either the July or the August meeting, so it's gonna be very wide-ranging, uh trying to address as many of the capital needs uh that the city has. Uh, again, and I can't stress this enough, um the city has a tremendous amount of room when it comes to the ability to borrow. We have an extremely low debt ratio, and we should be reinvesting in our infrastructure. Um, Mayor Cassetti wants to make sure that we are um doing so, that we're updating our infrastructure, that we're keeping up with the times that we're investing in the city, uh because again, these are the things that help drive new investors into the community, they want to see things like low mill rates, they want to see reinvestment in the community. Um, so we're entering, I think, a very exciting time for the city in the next uh six to twelve months. So with that, uh President Schur, I will turn it back to you and see if there are any questions.
All right, thank you, Kurt, um I guess since there was a question asked earlier, um I'll throw that back to you, the the question of the garbage uh collection, I'll just uh I guess uh ask if you have any comment on that?
Yeah, Sheila and I met with uh some folks from Deep uh last, beginning of last week. Um, and we kinda came at it from two different ways, Sheila came at it um from the aspect of the overall running of the program, trying to share some of the frustrations um that you folks have had with the program, so we wanted to make sure that that was communicated directly to Deep, uh we had the uh Assistant Commissioner, which was here, um and then I also discussed the financial uh aspects of it, because the numbers that I've seen reported through Deep and through the cog come nowhere close to the numbers that we have, um numbers that I actually received from that zero. So I've been working back and forth with Joe Dina Cola, who's the Senior Policy Advisor with the uh just trying to get an understanding of where their numbers come from, and I think I understand what it is they're doing now. Uh, it looks to me like they're combining the food waste and recycling and reporting that out, which I don't think is a true indication of the success of um of the program, if you look at um, and hold on, just bear with me a second, I just want to pull up the right spreadsheet. Um, if you if you look at the numbers that I had and then the raw numbers that I was able to pull out of the information I received from Deep, um over a twelve-week period, Deep is showing that there was forty-eight point seven-five tons of food waste diverted, I have it said forty-seven point two-three, so you know, there's only a ton difference, and that could come from a lot of different variations wherever off that one ton, but nothing of any significance. But the numbers that I shared with you about the low impact that this program is having, I think, carry forward. Um, and I think the deep numbers justify it, but I do have a call scheduled uh for the end of the week with him, uh just to go through and have that direct conversation, my numbers to his numbers, and make sure we're saying the exact same thing, so I would expect by the July meeting um that I will have hard, concrete numbers for all of you and give you the ability at that point to make a decision based on hard facts. Um, and I think that's, and I I also think and Sheila can certainly jump in anytime, but we definitely communicated that to um to the folks at Deep, that, you know, what we were seeing um from a financial perspective, this just doesn't make sense for the city, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to spend thousands of dollars to save hundreds of dollars, we're not in a position to to do so, uh you know, it certainly made sense in the study to to take a look at it um to see if it makes sense, if nothing else, Deep was able to look at this and maybe they're gonna gather some information for use in other towns, but at this point, I'm not a hundred percent sure it makes sense for the city being so.
Thank you. So we'll.
Josh, can I just?
Oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Alderman.
Sorry, I just, I just wanna say, I've heard from a lot of the residents, and aside from the numbers in terms of what it's saving the city or not saving the city, the residents were under the miscon- not not their misconception, but they were initially thought that there would be no cost to them, and once they ran through the bags, they were told they have to purchase bags, so now it's become an added burden to the residents. Um, and again, the whole idea that we talked about before where people thought, we we keep getting these, I call them nasty grams or little pieces of pamphlets left, um and that's invoked some harsh responses from our constituents, so I just want to consider that when we talk about, you know, going into phase two, which I am strongly against going into phase two, because that's where additional costs to the city and the residents would be would be coming. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Uh, any other um questions for CFO Miller tonight from the Aldermen?
Now, I wish I had uh two or three more for him, but.
Hey, hey, save them up, we you can have six.
No, no, there's no, this isn't like the minutes of your cell phone at the end of the month that carries over.
These are rollovers. Rollover questions, you get six next month.
Yep.
Yep, that's what he asked for, all right, so we'll move on next to uh Police Chief Wayne Williams, thanks for joining tonight.
Good evening, President Schur, uh members of the Board of Aldermen, I will keep it brief because I uh am just returning from vacation from last week. I spent yesterday, my first day back, in negotiations with the city and the union, so I'm trying to, today's a catch-up day. Um, I wanted to just let you know that we did have four officers, if you didn't see our posts, graduate uh last week from the New Britain Training Academy, so they're in our field training program, um which they started on Friday, so I met with them today. All seem great, all seem ready to go, so we'll uh we'll be uh moving forward then over the summer. Uh, we have one sergeant's position and two detective positions that we're hoping to fill um before the end of the year, uh we have some active, we have an active detective list that we're testing right now for sergeants, so uh we have also opened, if you have uh people that are interested, we have opened a hiring process for police officer, and uh we have an open dispatcher position coming at the end of the month due to our retirement, um so we'll be uh starting interviews and uh taking app, we're taking applications now, so uh both police and dispatcher can go to policeapp.com and they can find that uh those openings there and they can apply there. Um. The, I I congratulate John and Sheila and Kurt and the team on working with the union on getting up with a draft of a new contract. Uh, I know it's been a tedious process, it's taken a while, but I'm glad to see that we finally have accomplished that. Um, for those that may be driving on either Ford Street or Weekly Avenue, you will see that we have installed the new uh speed, solar speed signs up there, those um run about fifty, five hundred dollars apiece, but they were donated by the state DOT, they're brand new. We installed them about a week, week and a half ago, so those are now up there, we can move them on occasion, which is our plan. Um, we are also, I'm waiting on the final legislative update to see what new laws are gonna impact our operations and our services that we provide to the community. Uh, I know legislature changed, closed last week, they did pass a lot of things uh again at the last minute. Uh, I know legislature changed, closed last week. They did uh pass a lot of things uh again at the last minute. So I'm just waiting to see. Uh, what those are gonna, how those are gonna impact us regarding our garage downstairs, uh, as many of you know. Compassive construction is still working daily on the garage. Um, they are in the forming phase now and pouring phase. I'm hearing by the end of the week. So uh, they're still on task for the end of summer. Um, we, the Memorial Day Parade went off without a hitch, um, as did the Relay for Life. Uh, at Nolan Field along with the graduations, and we are just starting to prep for the uh Coleman Brother Carnival. Um, to figure out what we're going to need up there and what services we're gonna need to provide. So I am here for any questions that you may have.
Uh, any questions for the chief tonight from the Alderman? Hey, you're getting up early, too.
I'll get him off early. I like that.
Yeah, well, go back on vacation again. Welcome back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Uh, so ends the uh public official session. Uh, I just want to make a quick note. Um, you see on the agenda, the formatting is a little bit different for the next couple of sections. Uh, what I was trying to do was to, uh, we get a lot of reports every month and um. You know, we end up going through approve after approval and it's just to, to accept the report. We're not taking any action on them. So I tried to divide them up into. Uh, financial reports, which we actually are acting on. And then everything else is just filed under the next category, monthly reports. And we would just accept those and place them on file uh as we always do. Um, we can do that in one, one piece. So uh unfortunately, I thought I was gonna cut down on time tonight, but. Uh, there's five financial reports. Um, so a financial report, um, A is the finance, the finance committee. Anyone?
Motion to accept.
Um, uh, motion by Cassetti and second by Tar to accept and pay all bills. If found correct, all in favor. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, next one is uh the boat recommendations that are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second, approved by Yaman, second by Rivers, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, next up is the request for refunds in the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents, if found correct.
Motion.
Second by Tar, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, next is the, the um, the next two actually only come once a year and we discussed this um in detail last year. These are from the tax collector. Um, number D is the tax collector suspense list and E is the tax collector. Write-off list. Um, I just want to make a note that the tax collector does not discontinue uh trying to collect these. And as far as the write-off, it doesn't decrease the um, the tax collection rate and. Um, the tax selector, uh, Johanna gave us a very detailed explanation last year. Um, so D is the tax collector suspense list in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second, second.
Second by Yaman, all in favor. Any opposed or abstaining? All right, and the last one is E, the uh write-off list in the amount of forty-two thousand two hundred and sixty and twenty-six cents.
Motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Mamon, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And if you do have any questions on those, um, Johan has been great in explaining exactly how that works. Um, you know, it's just sort of more of a formality and sort of protecting, protecting us that way. All right, the rest is, uh, the next category is monthly reports. This is everything else that was in your packet. You received. Stuff from the library, from the fire department, uh, et cetera. We don't have to take any action on those, but I'd just like to accept those and, and uh place them all on file.
Motion to accept the monthly reports.
Second.
Okay, motion by uh Tar, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Uh, we have no accidents or claims. And we have two communications and a late communication. The first communication is from uh Sheila. Um, the two thousand twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposal. Um, this was discussed a little bit earlier, but uh for those of you who are there, um, do you want to make any comment on that, Sheila?
Yeah, just to say, you know, we were required to hold a public hearing. And we did before this meeting, um, and then I, I need to um. Get the Department of Revenue Services a, an authorization from this board to proceed with our project and. You know, try to uh secure funding for it. So if, you know, maybe just uh we accept the project. And would like it to go forward with the N A A program.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Rivers, second, second by not.
Tar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? All right.
Thank you.
Before with that, the second communication was the letter from uh Bruce Cofasso and Libby Meisner. Uh, regarding the alleyway at one oh three Main Street. Um, this was the request in the letter to buy. The um property from the city, but I think we need to just send that out for eight twenty-four before we do anything. Um, so.
Send it for eight twenty-four.
Second.
Yes.
To send for eight twenty-four by Yaman and a second by Rivers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This wasn't the same alley that I believe debris had fallen on the owner of Masamino's truck, was it?
No, it's further, I think it's further down the street.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, this is good. Thank you.
Um, and then we have late communication um from CFO Kurt Miller. It was in your packet. Um. Is Kurt's, Kurt's here. Do you want to briefly uh discuss that? We, we've done this, we've done the past with some of the other um pieces as well, but do you want to? Follow up on your comments um in your report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, what we did was we went through and we reviewed all of the projects. That were listed in two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen that were still open. Uh, we swept any money of any of the closed projects. Um, over into one line. So if you look at the spreadsheet that's provided, uh, the transfer in and transfer out. Uh, it's a hundred forty-five thousand eight fifty-six. Uh, fifty-six, and then that is all going to be placed into Nolan Field House improvements. Uh, the plan is to use that money to enhance uh what is currently going on. At uh Nolan Field with regards to the splash pad and the playground. Uh, we want to do a few extra things over there. The mayor has a nice vision, um, and this is good money uh to use for that. Again, money needs to be, referendum money needs to be used within the same scope that it was originally voted for. So we just couldn't arbitrarily pick another project uh to move this money over to and since. Uh, you know, there is a listing out of investments made in Nolan Field, um, that does qualify this money to be moved. You will notice that there is a hundred and two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars still left in the Ansonia Riverwalk. Segment eights, um, that is currently still under audit review with the state of Connecticut. Uh, they're in the, they're in the process of closing all of that out. So once that information is received at that point, this money could potentially be used um or something in conversation with. Sheila, we think the best use would be to continue to roll it forward uh and invest more into our greenway. Uh, so perhaps use it as a, a match to another grant that she receives or something along those lines. So again, this is more just. The mechanics of what we need to do to clean these things up. It's, it's happened in the past, uh, and will continue to happen into the future every time there's a reference.
Okay, um, I have um. One question. I mean, I don't have no problem with rolling over, but uh, but the concession stand has a uh. Has a drop cloth on the roof, so I hope that um some of that money can uh replace that roof on the uh concession stand.
Yeah, should we, we looked at, we looked at that, we looked at other um improvements to the field house itself as well. Both of those. Both of those things need to be improved and whether we do it. You know, with this money or we do it with uh referendum money that, that will be um. That will be a consideration and a lot of the improvements had to be with the concession stand. Um. And some of the improvements in the field house uh were cost prohibitive. With the money, with the money that we had, so, yeah.
Okay.
Any other uh questions for Kurt or Sheila on this issue? Okay, so you're just seeking approval to um, to close out the fifteen and seven, then twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen referendums by sweeping the. The funds as proposed?
Uh, yes, please.
Yep.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries. Thanks. Um, next up, we have resignations. We have one resignation uh from Brian Lasky from the W P C A.
Motion to accept. And send a letter of thank you. Sorry, Joe.
Uh, that's right. Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Yaman to accept and send a letter of thanks. By the uh town clerk, hopefully, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? All right, thank you. Thanks for your service. Um, resolution, there was one resolution in the packet. Uh, we've done this every year. This is the um. Uh, twenty, City of Ansonia, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two State Homeland Security Grant Funding. And custodial ownership of regional assets and uh. The Department of Energy Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security. Just authorizing the mayor to sign documents as needed.
Make that motion.
Motion by.
Second.
Second by not, uh, to accept this resolution. Any other questions on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions, right, motion carries unanimously, uh, appointments, mayor's letter, June seventh. Um, pursuant to my powers under the um city charter and code, I hereby submit the following appointments. There's one appointment. Water Pollution Control Authority, three-year term. Um, nominee of Dana Hague, Republican of nineteen West Roosevelt Drive, Ansonia. Term expiring one thirty-one twenty-six replacement, Greg Martin.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the extensions, right, motion carries unanimously. Um, we have uh ordinance, we added on there, um. By um, our ordinance chair, Yaman, would you like to take that up now?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is something that had been previously discussed, actually, at last month's meeting. We were going to have a subcommittee meeting. And unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I wasn't able to do that, but it's something that we had agreed upon. Um, before the last fiscal year was, which was in an amendment of the tax abatement for the volunteer firefighters. We had, we had agreed at the last year to um, in, in conjunction with the fire department and the finance department. To set it at fifteen hundred with the understanding that we would go to two thousand this year. And after um, we weren't able to do the subcommittee meeting, the Mr. President and I um approached Attorney Marini, who indicated because it's a. Um, a slight change to one, to one thing that we could do it at the full meeting, so I'm asking for your support to modify. Um, ordinance twenty-five A dash twenty-six, which is the tax abatement for volunteer firefighters and Ansonia Rescue Medical Personnel. From the amount of fifteen hundred dollars in the stat, i- in that ordinance to the amount of two thousand dollars for our volunteers.
Second.
I'll make, I'll make a motion if Joe wants a second or vice versa. Or Joe, was your motion, the motion?
Made the motion.
Joe made the motion.
Oh, sorry. I can, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, Yaman makes the motion. Who made the second?
Joe, yeah.
Second by Cassetti, any discussion on this? All right, I'll just mention that uh this is a great move and this, this actually puts us um as the uh, the best abatement. In, in the area, higher than our neighboring towns and hopefully a great rec- recruitment and retention tool for, for the volunteer fire, firemen and uh. E M Ts, so uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I gotta abstain. Um, I'm a volunteer.
All right.
Well, I don't know.
And Joe.
Can I vote for it? I mean.
Sure.
Why not?
I don't see any, I, I don't see any conflict with that in terms of policy.
Okay, then I, I'm in, I'm on.
All right.
I vote yea.
All right, all uh unanimous then.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. And thanks for your service, Joe.
Well deserved.
Yep, um, we have nothing under new business unless we have any other new business that I'm not aware of. Anyone have any new business?
Yeah, tires.
Tires. All right, back, kick it back to Jeannette here.
Yeah.
Continuing business.
Continuing business, ongoing monkey business. Tires, all right, uh, moving on to old business, there's one item on there. I'll just make a note, um. This is the facade loan, final approval for um, a couple businesses. And uh, you know, we had, we did have a subcommittee in the past and uh I made the decision to. Um, sort of do away with that because we end up having to come to the full board anyways. And the city, um, and the finance department is the one that has the records as to. How much money's in the account. And so it's kind of seems like an extra step that we don't need to be taking since we're always coming back to the full board anyway, so. Um, this was the facade loan approval for um, Jerica Santiago ninety-eight Main Street and Maria Esposito five sixteen Main Street. Sheila, do you have any comment on this?
No, I mean, they had originally asked for five thousand dollars, but we are running a bit low on our, our loan funds. So we wanted to be fair and we've got another one in the hopper, so we just, we thought maybe it'd be best to give three thousand each. And that way we still have money left in our loan fund and they, they seemed okay with it, so.
Okay. So we're seeking approval for three thousand each for the two businesses.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, who was the second on that?
Adam Oski.
Discussion.
Yep, discussion, Rivers.
Okay, what happens when there's no more money there?
Well, I mean, the idea has been that it's replenished by people paying back these loans. Um, we're having difficulty getting everyone to participate and return the money. Um, but I mean, so far we, we've just eked by. Um, that's a, that's a fair question. Um, and I think at some point I might have to look at some, somehow securing some. Foot grant funding to supplement our loan fund.
We've done gentle reminders to the businesses that have not repaid the loans. Uh, we have not commenced formal collection action against businesses because we understand there's been some difficult times. Um, but you know, we're, we're free to, you know, the pleasure of this board. Um, discuss which accounts are delinquent and how to best handle that at this point. As some of our stern reminders have produced good results, um, and some have been ignored.
Can I ask Kurt, Kurt, is that something that you have, whoever has an open line or one of these facade loans and. Where they are in terms of like their amortization for payment? Do, do you have that?
In, in front of me, no, but I can get that information, yeah.
Yeah, is that something you could send out to me, please?
Yeah, yeah, to us.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, Anna has it, so she keeps track of everything pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can charge Chicago for it, but just send it to me, please.
It's going against Chicago's question bank.
Chicago, you're down to five questions for next.
Yeah, too many questions, too many.
Uh, all right, so any other questions on this? And I, and I'll also note that uh they do have a period of to pay back as well. So there's also ones that are completely in compliance with the program. That still are in the, you know, in their, whatever you call.
Three year. They have a three year grace, sorry, they have a three year grace period. So if you pay it back within three years, you don't pay any interest. But after three years, then you start paying the payments and the interest.
All right, so we had a motion and a second to um, to approve three thousand for each business. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right.
Wait, 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 wait.
Right.
For two businesses, I only see one business here. She said that the other one is in the pipeline, but.
No, 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 two, two, two are on here. Plus, there was a third one that, that was going to be applying down the road.
Hasn't done so yet.
Why they wanted to make sure there was money still in there. Yeah, there's uh ninety-eight Main Street and five sixty Main Street on the agenda.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so three and three.
Okay.
So did you still vote uh yes for that?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay. All right, so motion carries, thanks. All right, so uh that ends the regular um session of our uh meeting and uh next up, we have it, we have three items under executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Bobby hit it at the same time.
Motion.
Sorry.
Co-motion by Tar and Rivers. Tar slightly ahead it and Rivers the second to move to executive session. And uh the usual suspects, the alderman plus uh city staff requested.
All right, just give me a second to transition us into executive session.
Give a musical interlude, maybe?
Yeah, I know, right? Something.
Sheila hit it.
You didn't want to hear me talk, now you want to hear me sing?
Yeah, yeah. I heard you were good.
Yeah.
A friend of mine told me.
Ah, Chicago, see, this is where the evening starts to take a terrible turn, you know, just was going so well. We were doing so well.
Well, I mean, you know, that's what he told me, I mean, you know.
John told me she's opening for Rock the Valley, so.
Yes. Beautiful voice. Sounds like party girl voice. Yeah, that's it. From the eighties. Seventies.
Exactly. And my friend loves it.
Chicago.
John, hurry up.
It for you. You know, right? You mess up. Some of us have gone, some have gone.
No, I don't think no one's gone yet.
Oh.
I think he's having um a little bit of problem because uh
Yeah.
Bone.
Usually, yeah, right, Chicago, and usually it's right away.
Yeah.
Gosh, cue him up some Jeopardy music, put the pressure on him.
Fifty minutes to this point. Is somebody working on moving us to a Zoom room or?
Yes, uh, uh, John is. Was, yes, supposedly.
There it is.
Our dad is.
Yeah, creators are playing this, baby.
Still here.
Hi.
Hi. Right, right. In the executive session, we had three items. I'll go them sequentially as per the agenda. Number one, contract negotiations, RE Public Health Director. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to memorialize the terms as discussed in executive session and authorize the mayor to execute.
My second.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Yaman, second by Genetti. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Good. Number two. City of Ansonia, RE two forty one Main Street pending plan.
What's your? Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Yaman, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Most.
Motion carry. Number three, potential sale lease of city property. A, Ansonia Copper and Brass SHW two, two. B, two Elm Street, C, Silver Hill Road, D, WPCA.
I'll make a motion with respect to all four properties to continue the process under the charter and proceed to planning and zoning with an eight twenty four referral.
I'll second.
Motion by Yaman, second by Tar. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? My motion carries unanimously. And that is.
Chicago.
I go hit it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Lamon. Have a great night. Thank you, everybody.
Wait, no. Wait, no voted.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
No one actually.
Don't forget I'm away until your next meeting.
No one actually voted to adjourn.
Enjoy, Trish.
All in favor?
You seconded.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Otherwise, the meeting will be open until next month.
John, you cannot, John, you cannot stretch this out any longer.
I won't be here. Bye. Do we need to redo it or not?
Speed run through all the, actually, because of what you just did, you have to start from the beginning.
Yeah, goodbye, John. Good evening.
Right.
Good evening.
Please rise for the pledge.